Perfect. All right, I'd like to call this a special meeting of the Old Limonland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission to Order. Today is Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, six o'clock P M., and we're meeting in the main meeting room at Town Hall. Um, we have no new business on the agenda, but I would like to make a motion to reverse the old business and then continue public hearings so we can get these three applicants out the door if they want to, um, in any, uh, representatives they have. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there were, there were many, choose one, and, um, all those in favor.
Alright.
Thank you all. Any opposition? Seeing none, I'm gonna, um, move on to old business, which is.
What are you doing? You should figure who is seated tonight, just because we have people who are new to the commission, and I want to make sure we've got the right people actually seated.
Okay, yes, well, we do have a new commission member. So you want to introduce yourself?
Hi there, I'm, uh, Rob James, uh, um, Grass Hill Road.
Wonderful.
Excited to be here, thank you.
Welcome. Now, you are a full member, I believe, and so, and then, um, so we have myself. Um, so we, we have two, oh, no, we have one alternate.
Here.
Yeah, okay, so.
Got the other one.
Yeah, so just.
He emailed and said he wasn't going to make it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I haven't been able to catch up.
Full members.
Okay, perfect.
None of them was not here for the beginning of three oh eight dash.
Yeah, but he can sit for the public hearing.
Yep, okay.
And whether we deliberate or not.
Okay.
We'll address that.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Alright, so now moving on to item number two under old business on the agenda, which is.
Do you want to accept the new application first or?
Oh, that would be new business.
That would be new business. It just came in. We can amend the agenda to add the new business here if you want.
Okay, so I.
They're not going to be here as far as I know, so.
Okay.
We just need to set it up a sidewalk for it.
So I will, um, make a motion to amend the agenda again to add an item of new business, which is an application for nineteen Edgely Road. Is that going to be twenty-five dash four?
Yes, it'll be twenty-five dash four.
Is there anyone from that application here tonight? Okay, seeing none, um, we can set a sidewalk for it. Is anybody traveling in the rest of the month of February or March?
Gone in March.
Probably in March.
Okay. Is there a better day?
They said Tuesdays and Wednesdays work best for them, if that's available to the commission members.
Yeah, yes.
My only suggestion is, is that maybe we consider doing it when there's light.
Yep.
Because. Yeah, I mean, I don't, the last site, I didn't really see anything.
Yeah, obviously, but we only have one sidewalk, and by then five o'clock, by the time we get to it, we'll have light at this point in time. So up to you how you want to do it, but at this point, for one sidewalk at five o'clock, you should, you should be okay at this point.
Tuesday the twenty-fifth. I'll be out next week.
You'll be out next week? Okay.
Do you plan to have a regular meeting in February or is this it?
This is it.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so can we go out to, you're gone all of March, John?
No, I'm gone the, uh, fourth. The twelfth. It's doable next week. I'll just sit out the sidewalk.
Okay, and as I explained at the last, uh, commission meeting, I will not be going to sidewalks from now on, and I'll try to see what I can from the road. Um, so it, as long as the rest of you agree that that date works, go ahead with the twenty-fifth. Five o'clock. Hopefully plenty of daylight. We're going into spring, hopefully.
No snowstorm or whatever else we might get.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so that is all set. You, okay, now on to old business, which is listed as item number two on the agenda, which is application twenty-five dash one for Lime Academy Apartments LLC for seventy-seven dash one and seventy-seven dash two Lime Street. Improvements associated with construction of two apartment buildings, including access drive, parking areas, stormwater drainage, and basin, septic system, and rain garden.
You do have large maps on your table, which is the specification.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jimmy Cassidy. I'm a professional engineer and principal with the firm of Halley, Pearson, and Cassidy. Uh, my office located at six thirty Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut. Here tonight representing Lime Academy Apartments LLC, uh, who are the owners of two parcels, seventy-seven Lime Street and seventy-seven two Lime Street. Uh, seventy-seven one Lime Street is, uh, also known as the Southwick Commons Apartment. Uh, with me also this evening, I have Matt Davidson, Davidson Environmental. For this project, uh, he'll be giving a lot of talk about the property. Needing your package, um, several. Um, the first one I have is a index plan, um, as I mentioned. Here, um, we're talking to two partners. First, like, for standards, seventy-seven one, that's the existing development for, uh, two buildings consisting of six dwelling units per building, two bedroom, uh, per dwelling unit. Um, that was what we call phase one of the Southwood Commons, uh, apartment development. As part of that, there was always anticipation of phase two, um, which is at the far east end of the property. Uh, it's an additional parcel of about, uh, three point seven three acres, um, in total, it's about seven point five acres. Access to this parcel would be off the line street. There's already a driveway that's built, uh, in the first section of apartments. Total length is about thirteen hundred feet. Um, what we're looking to do is extend off the end of that existing driveway. For those of you who are on the field walk, that's where we parked the other day, and we walked in from there. We're looking at extending the roadway or driveway about four hundred feet, uh, with a turnaround at the end. Off that roadway, we're looking at building two additional buildings, the same exact footprint as the existing buildings that are out there. So you'd be looking at two buildings with six units per building for a total of twelve units, two bedrooms, uh, per dwelling unit. If I go to a blow-off. Are these there? Some of the hard work of weapons associated on site, um, we need to figure one, phase two, the large weapons area. I, acres, it actually drains towards nine ninety-five, which is up in the north, like to the top of the page. And then off on the park to the right, uh, there's another weapons associated, uh, river, uh, that flows in a southerly direction, uh, to off down to the south. Uh, we are bounded on the bottom, um, by Lime, Old Lime High School, uh, so Regional District eighteen, uh, property. Bound on its east by the existing development, and then we're bounded on the north into the east, sorry, on the west by the existing apartments. And then the north and the east are bounded by, uh, vacant lands presently owned by Lime College Academy, um, and then off to the very top, uh, they're bounded by I ninety-five. The property, that's the proposed building, that would be serviced by a onsite septic system. Uh, to the west of building number three, uh, we're looking at having actually both settlements in. Um, the lower one would service the first building, and then the one fifty feet up, ready to know that would actually service the second building. We did a whole series of soil testing this year, and they found that to be the optimum place. Uh, we are proposing that the central systems, um, would be obviously outside, there's actually a conservation use on this property, so it's outside of conservation use. Uh, they are separated by fifty feet per state health code, um, and also, uh, the buildings would be serviced by private wells. Uh, we are looking at installing a fire tank, uh, approximately at this location here as part of the overall development to service not only the portion of the development, but also the existing buildings on this portion of the site. Stormwater management, um, will be coming off the existing roadway, will be coming up to a high point, uh, just at the southerly end of this building. Uh, from this point, this portion of the drainage ties back into an existing drainage system that eventually discharges through its existing stormwater management basin. Uh, just to the west of the existing building. From the high point here down to the turnaround, um, we'd be collecting the stormwater through a catch basin and discharging to another stormwater basin. This stormwater basin is designed to not only continually keep flows, but also to treat, treat the first flush or the one point three inches of runoff off the site. Root leaders for each one of the buildings, uh, would be discharged to an individual rain garden, uh, so building number three, there's a rain garden located here. Designed to collect the root leaders and start recharging some of that water back into the ground. Along with building number four, uh, the rain is to this building, discharged to another rain garden at this location here. Uh, both designed to catch that one point three inches, um, runoff from the roots of these sites. This is just below, this is a new set of the design of the septic systems, uh, which is ultimately going to be reviewed and approved, um, by the local apartment. Um, again, we've done all kinds of soil testing up here, and we find soils are more than that, but we're going to support onsite septic systems for the site. So, uh, what does this all mean? Um, to do these activities, uh, we need to have activities within a hundred foot upwind review area from the weapons. And also, um, as for our field walk, it comes to our attention, there's potentially a vernal pool in the center of this large wetlands area that's off to the west, and you have a four hundred foot regulated area, um, from that vernal pool. Um, we, Matt will talk a little bit more about it. We need to, um, try to get a better idea of the location of it. Um, though, at the end of the day, what we're finding is because there's already a conservation use around that area, um, will be at least a hundred feet, uh, from that vernal pool. And most spots are much more greater than that. But within the hundred foot upwind review area, um, I do need to do some drainage and construction, septic system and construction of roadway. You'll see a red land on this plan, uh, this represents the hundred foot upwind review line of the weapons. So we're looking at two activities. Activity number one would be for the destruction of the stormwater management basin at the end of the project and rating the slope, um, for the end of the cul-de-sac. Uh, we're looking at activity of about eleven hundred, or eleven, sorry, eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-two square feet. And then we'll call this activity number two, uh, which consists of destruction of one of the septic systems, and then also some draining on the yard, uh, behind this unit for another activity of about, uh, nine hundred, or nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight square feet. The, um, again, Matt will talk a little bit more about the vernal pool, um, but, yeah. Based upon what we believe the vernal pool is, um, the entire site is within the four hundred feet of the vernal pool. Um, so the overall service for the old overall site is about two and a half acres, uh, so about two and a half acres of activity, uh, within that vernal pool area. So that, Matt come up and talk a little bit more about the weapons you found.
For the record, uh, Matt Davidson with Davidson Environmental, uh, we're out of Chesta, Connecticut. I reside in Jersey, Connecticut. Um, weapons were actually flagged by my brother Eric Davison last April. But I have reviewed this. I have been to the site, and I've reviewed the delineated weapons. So as Jim mentioned, um, there's, in, in the weapon sketch, there's actually three delineated weapon areas. Um, so there's this, this, um, westernmost weapon, uh, is the largest, this is the weapon center left to the inside when you enter the site. And then there were two loaves, this eastern weapon that were delineated. The, this large western wetland is a forested wetland, um, seasonally flooded. This is the area where we could find potential vernal pool habitat. Um, Eric did go back out there, um, the weather's been challenging, but he did go out after this latest round of rain. Um, he described what he delineated as the potential vernal pool as a very conservative estimate, so it's potentially overrepresenting it, um. But it's, it's probably the right way to do it at this time without going out there and actually certainly. What we found is Jim mentioned is that's the holding of minimum a hundred feet from clearing limits from that potential vernal pool line. Um, that line is also flagged in the field of flagging. Um, the, this weapon, as Jim said, drains to the north. If you look at their pocket being here, it's very, very flat. Um, the soils in this weapon are actually glacial outwashed soils, stratified sand and gravel. Uh, if you look at the soil survey, there's essentially a band of outwashed soils that almost covers both wetland areas, and then the upwind area is just a, a till, an outpropping. Um, so with, with glacial outwashed soils, um, in this case, clearly there's some groundwater discharge because there's some pond room. Um, but glacial outwash drives soils are also very good at groundwater recharge, so you're going to get high infiltration rates of the weapons there. Um. As far as the other weapon areas, uh, this is a forested weapon that drains, um, northerly and then back down. Uh, these weapons all, as Jim said, drain essentially to the east, but then south. Um, these are headwater weapons, and these drain down into the sound. There is also probably potential vernal pool habitat in this area here, based on talking with Eric, but this area is very far from the development area. Um, so we didn't measure anything off, and there were clearly more than well over a hundred feet from it, and there are any activities. This wetland area here, um, there's a load of seasonally saturated, uh, hydrology weapon that extends up into the site here. The, this stormwater discharge area would essentially feed that. Um, the remaining parts of this weapon are just a large, um, emergent marsh, um, that turns into a pond a little further to the east. Um, this little area down here appears to be a little permanent ponded area that's at the edge of the emergent, it looks like it had a dug and pass. Um. And if there's any else, I have not done weapon impact assessment. We were really waiting till we could get a better handle on the vernal, the potential vernal pool here. We, we were literally just out there, and we were out there, trying to check. We had this meeting coming up, but time, Eric said he could take a look at it. But as I said, we are holding a minimum of a hundred feet from any of the potential vernal pool areas. That's all I have. Let's ask those questions.
Are you going to prepare that assessment? Because that's what is in our minutes.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't want to prepare it before I knew more about this, you know, and I, I think that's probably, for me, you know. And Eric, for that sense, and also, this is probably the most important resource area of the site.
So you know the watershed? I didn't have a chance to do some homework, but do you know what watersheds, those two wetlands, are they in the same watershed? It looks like they're going in different directions.
Which watersheds weapons are in?
So this one's going to the north. I believe it actually comes back under ninety-five, and it's back down to the river.
Oh, so they're probably all in the Duck River? And who's the adjacent property owner? I just.
Above.
Yeah.
Uh, it's actually Lime College Academies.
And, and the high school is to the?
High school is to the south.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so this is the vacant piece of land.
Okay.
It's the correct name, uh, you know, Lime Academy College, the limerds.
Okay, so. Are you going to talk about the sedimentation erosion controls? Because it looks like there's a fairly substantial fill with the turnaround, and, and then I'm also interested in probably some more detail on how the water treatment systems are going to work.
So, yeah, so you do have an erosion sediment control plan just submitted with prior application. Uh, what I was looking at doing is number ones, uh, presenting the entire, uh, the service area, not only with state sovens, but also work on state pay bills.
Okay.
Or so talks, uh, as we are, especially in this area, ready to tow a steeper slope and, you know.
Yeah, it looks like there's at least ten or more feet of grading there, right?
Yeah, so if you, if you, we're, we're from walking the site, uh, there is a large mound, uh, the high point up here is about elevation seventy-six. The weapons low point to the west is twenty-six. To the east, it's about sixteen. Um, I need to take off a portion of this hill here. I'm going to cut the grade down about fourteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
So then I am filling along the west side. Whether or not it is balanced, like, uh, with the custom fills here. Uh, to extend this road out, I do need to create a fill slope along the end of the roadway, because we walked down towards that weapons on the far east and saw the great drops off. So I'm going to end up at three to one slope, um, so I am looking at putting, um, the double, double road protection and being so fence and state pay bills. Uh, each of the third areas going in that direction is about one and a quarter acres. It's pretty well decided, uh, in the middle, so that the not large area is going to it. Um, in addition to, uh, what we do occasionally is the stormwater management basin, put out the.
Said they some.
During construction, so we can.
Do you have that spelled out in some sort of?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the, uh, construction sequence.
Okay, on, on the plans.
Correct. Um, and then on this, again, on the stormwater management basin, what I tried to do, break it into three different components. Again, I tried to keep the minimal amount of roadway going back towards that existing drainage system, but I am utilizing against a new stormwater management basin. You're doing calculations of this, it's actually designed to accommodate this development, but I also am taking it from the high point, um, and picking up the roadway and the driveways and putting it to a new stormwater management basin to treat our portion of this roadway, uh, in front of the units. And from the high point, not to get, not only to be easily closed, but to treat stormwater quality. In addition to, um, as recommended in the new two thousand twenty-four stormwater management, we're taking those root leaders. Uh, we're trying to have disconnect the flow, so we're putting them through a rain garden, uh, rather than directly into the system. So each of the buildings has its own individual rain garden size, um, to grab that first one point three inches of runoff and allow us to try to recharge into the ground. Uh, there is a high level of flow on those, um, so if they do fill up, they would be carrying on to the joint quadrants in each direction.
I'm assuming you have standard catch basins for sand that comes in off the road and otherwise.
There would be good catch basins. So there is, there's one catch basin, uh, at the end of the roadway. That's going to collect from here to the high points down to that catch basin. In addition to, there are two catch basins at the beginning of our roadway, that would also be put in before they tie back into the existing drainage system.
So they'd be easily accessible for.
Yes.
Cleaning them out.
Yeah, they're right on. Correct.
I, I do have one more question. Are you, oh, in controlling the volume of storm water, have you taken any, what are you, how's you balancing? Are you designing for a particular storm that you're controlling or?
So after a hundred years storm event, um, but again, when I look at the counts that originally prepared for this development, it was taken into account of development that.
Okay, so it's already been.
So I'm not considering whole well, that's just my answer.
Right.
So I, I just took this, this two hundred foot section of the road and put it into a smaller basin here.
So there wouldn't be any increase in runoff?
From this site, but the other thing you got to realize is we're in, in flood on this side, just beyond it's flood plain. Um, so a lot of times, if, if the basin was in flood plain, I saw, I wouldn't want to retain it, but, uh, I'm not, I'm on the fringe of the flood plain, I'm not in it. So I am, I am taking advantage of.
Takes on the adjacent property.
Correct.
Any questions? Right? Seeing none, does anybody want to make a motion? I know we're reading on a little board.
I, I think, um, we're, so we're not having a meeting. I thought maybe we would have a meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting, but I guess we're not.
The next one is in March. We don't have a regular scheduled meeting in February.
Because I, I'd like to sort of, this is a fairly, this is the largest project, if you discount.
Yeah.
The quarry that I've seen, certainly, and I'd like to make some recommendations on, on conditions.
Right.
If that's possible, um, I'm comfortable with the site. I think it looks very viable. I'm a little nervous about all the, the filling and stuff, so I'd, I'd like to see us. And I don't know how we do our bonding, but, and maybe have some monitoring during construction, because if that fill slope fails, it not only leave, you know, impacts the wetland, it goes off the property.
We are allowed to ask for our consulting engineer, Jeffrey Jacobson, to propose a road control sedimentation bond, and that would be responsibility for the applicant. Um, we could also have them out there to perform periodic inspections as well. That's what we're doing on the neck road site. So, um, that can be included as conditions of approvals.
I would just like to have, and I can probably do that within a week to get those in.
The, the difficulty is, obviously, there's a sixty-five day period, since it wasn't a public hearing or a statement of a significant activity, uh, to act on the application from its receipt. So just keep that in mind. I had, I know the date of receipt off the top of my head, we can certainly look that up.
That's my only.
Yeah.
I'd just like to, and I've, I've looked through a lot of our records, like thirty-six years of minutes, and we don't really. It's interesting, in the early part of our history, there were lots of very specific conditions going into the minutes. Because I don't know that we write permits, and I guess, Eric, you write permits now with those conditions, so they actually get a document?
Yeah, they, they physically get a document with those conditions with them, yeah.
Um. I'm just, you know, I'm just concerned about the size. I would like to know, you know, whether or not that is a vernal pool, and we were supposed to get the, the report. Um, I'm not sure of their time sequence to zoning. Are you going to zoning right away or?
We're trying to. We split it in the beginning in December, and I told them, and it was a meeting in December, so. Or, or get back up, or, you know, we are acknowledging that there is potential vernal pool there. Yeah, I mean, well, as Eric, sorry, as Matt mentioned, I think we were very conservative in, um, trying to determine what the limits of that vernal pool could be. Uh, we are protecting at least on our feet from it, uh, it isn't a conservation use, and, and that will be cleared.
It does seem like the vernal pool is on the side of the site that's less concerning as far as the amount of fill.
It is, yeah, I mean, that's just the septic, so I'm not, I'm not, well, although they indicated that this might be.
I think you said offsite, wide away.
He said that was way up.
Yeah.
Way up high.
Yeah, the only other spot that was identified.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So we're not, it's up gradient and nowhere near it.
Well, I, I could go with, um. We can truly set nation by our engineer to have, you know, a sized bond that really ensures that.
Yeah, as a condition of approval, it's traditional to ask the engineer to set an erosion control figure, certainly, we can make that a recommendation as far as this application goes.
That would go into the permit?
That would go into the permit.
And how about monitoring?
Again.
Maybe like once a month or after, after significant range usually.
Because you do it after, like, a intra, out, intra range.
Yeah.
Again, if you want to make that a condition of approval, I will let Jacobson know that that's part of what they're required to do. And we have an engineering budget set aside for that purpose as well. Okay?
I, I would recommend that. I'm confident that the storm water, water quality things seem to be pretty much in line with doing the job.
So do you want to make a motion?
I would make the motion that we issue a permit with, uh, conditions that include, um, by our engineer recommendations on the size of the sedimentation erosion control bond. Are those actual bonds or do we get cash?
We no longer accept surety bonds.
So the town gets cash and it has it in an account so that we could.
Yes.
The applicant's difficult.
In, in fact, honestly, we are still holding eleven thousand dollars from phase one. They never asked for back. Um, so I had to notify the developer, uh, you might want to ask for it back because.
Yes.
Our bookkeeper's getting tired of holding it, so, yeah, we have, in an account, eleven thousand dollars from phase one that they never bothered to get back, so, yeah.
Cause I, I'm used to having the commission release bonds.
Yes, we'll come to the zoning commission. Not, we, that is, it's a zoning.
The zoning.
So, uh, in, at zoning for next month, I'm going to have about six bond releases, because my bookkeeper gave me all these and said, get rid of them. And so I'm calling people up and saying, ask for your money back, and we'll be doing that at the next zoning meeting.
And then, you know, just some sort of regular monitoring during construction to ensure that the erosion controls are in place and, um, hopefully, they would notify us. They seem to have, you know, a viable consultant that could really.
Yeah, uh, yeah, honestly.
Warn them of impacts to the wetlands.
The, Kevin Resnikov, associate with the developer here, I've known for probably a good fifteen years now, and I have a regular working relationship with Henry, so I'm, I'm comfortable with working with Henry on, making sure this gets inspected properly.
Okay, who is Henry again?
Henry Resnikov is the developer of phase one.
Ah, okay.
And, um, I work with him closely in Clinton on what didn't turn out to be the final, uh, site, uh, plan for the, uh, Clinton site that is now the big Y site. He and I worked on regs there, uh, while I was the CEO in Clinton for about two years. Um, so again, he and I have had a, a pretty good relationship over again about fifteen years now, so I'm pretty comfortable working with him on this.
Why don't you restate your.
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, so, so I understand it, two conditions. One, for a bond in an amount suitable, uh, or set by, uh, Jacobson Associates. And two, for, uh, inspections during construction on a schedule to be determined, again, by Jacobson Associates to, uh, and.
Or if they have.
Or if, if the applicant wants to come in with their own proposal, I will run it by Jacobson to make sure it's adequate. Does that work for you?
Yeah, and it's really designed to control, identify sedimentation erosion control issues, solve them, and make sure that the wetlands, adjacent wetlands aren't impacted.
Okay, we will make sure that's reflected in the permit.
I will second.
Thanks, John. All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, any, um, in opposition? Any extensions? Seeing none, passes. Thank you. Alright, moving on to, uh. Well, it's on, it was business, number three, which is applications, and five dash four for Rodney and Deborah Hornbeck at sixteen. Uh, it's a removal of existing buildings, select tree removal and construction of an even four bedroom dwelling and associated improvements. I think.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Joe Ren, professional engineer of Indigo in Old Saybrook. Um, and you did say Hornby, the first one, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Hornby.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's like, did I read it wrong? Okay.
So this one, um, I think we went into a lot of detail last month, and then you also had the, uh, sidewalk. On the site as well, uh, all the, the trees that are supposed to be removed were marked out in field. All the buildings on site that's shown in yellow on the site plan that you saw in the field and in the photos we presented, those are all to be removed. New house constructed in this area with a septic system over in this area. Um, of course, we have the Mill Brook, wetlands highlighted in green associated with Mill Brook, and then the pink is the hundred foot, uh, review area. So. Single family house, uh, with driveway. Uh, the driveway will be, uh, crushed down, so it'll be permeable. That will replace the existing paved driveway that's a little bit closer, uh, mostly within the review area. Now the driveway is mostly out of the review area. You can see that these two buildings here are closest to the wetlands with a small shed here. All of those will be removed, the existing house to be removed as well. New house on that location. Of course, we have, uh, silt fence in stockpile area. Um, the septic system is approved by, uh, Ledge Lake. Um, with that, with the presentation last month and the sidewalk, I think that's. Uh, all the information that we have, and if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions?
Just have a, a question. I know the applicant, when we were on the site, was talking about removing some trees, but not doing the stumps. Because there's sort of a, a good slope down to the river, would it be possible to preserve a little bit of the top of slope? Probably within our hundred foot buffer, I would guess, um, in a more natural state. They, um, so they're, they're gardeners. Yeah. It's an older couple. They're both gardeners. They do have plans to landscape, um, the site. Um, so this will not be all lawn through here. Uh, we do have trees. We're keeping several. Um, they're working with a tree company. There's a letter in the file. We show all the ones to be removed to promote the health of the other ones next to them. Um, there was one that fell over into the brook too, and they're asking to pull that out as well from, uh, from the upland. Uh, which is also a good idea. As far as creating a buffer here, there's no plan on the site plan to do that. But again, they've already expressed a lot of interest in gardening and, uh, uh, revegetating natural vegetation in this area. So, um. And that would be great because this is an important river in terms of, you know, an alewife run on it. So. It's one of our more significant rivers. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm confident that they would. Just upstream of that. Yeah, they're coming down from East Adam to relocate and live here. So obviously that's a very forested section of our state. So they, you know, they definitely want to revegetate, uh, and garden and maintain the property as sustainable. Eric, I, I have one question. You probably have some standard conditions that go with the permits, um, like do they alert you to when work starts?
Yeah, written right in is that they should be having me out there before they start and having me out there once the work is completed.
Controls are up.
Yeah, like that is standard conditional for all of these.
Okay.
Um.
And the, the buildings that are being removed, it looks like that their footprint exceeds, uh, the new footprint of what would be in the setback.
Uh, definitely exceeds. That's within the setback. Overall, it's probably about equivalent. It's my, it's just a rough guess. But definitely reducing building roof structure area within the hundred foot.
Right.
Up in the review area. Cause it's just this section of the house right here, that wedge.
Mm-hmm.
That's in there. This is out, this is out, so.
Right, and then driveways further away from.
And it's permeable and out of the, almost completely out of the. Yep, just a little section that overlaps a little section of the paved driveway, but it's going to permeable. Um, decorate as well.
Oh, I think it's a, a definite improvement to, uh, the layout of the lot and, uh, would be an improvement to the, to the neighborhood. And I make a motion to approve as, uh, submitted.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those.
The only thing I would add is with Eric's standard conditions. I guess.
They're on the permit.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're on the permit, so.
Okay. I'll make sure they get added to the permit. Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections, extensions? Seeing none, it passes.
Thank you.
It's true. All right. I'll read into the record your next one. Item number four is application twenty five dash three for Paul and Dana Neves. Uh, um, and then who are the applicants? And Eric and Mary Kate Parker are the owners of thirty Old Shore Road. The construction of a new four bedroom dwelling at twenty four foot by twenty foot barn and other associated improvements.
Right, thank you again. For the record, Joe Ren, uh, professional engineer of Indigo in Old Saybrook. Uh, similar to the last application, we were here, we described, uh, this application in pretty much detail. Uh, we did have a sidewalk. It was a little dark. We had some flashlights. Um, but I did, I was able to flag with yellow tape that you could very clearly see, uh, with flashlight. Out there, um, at least the three major corners of the building and the barn as well. Um, so everybody could see that was, uh, well attended, um, that day, but it was, um. Now, a little dark by the time we start us five forty on a cloudy day, um, in, in February. Uh, so it was a little. It was a little dark, but we were able to see, uh, again, where the major, um, development is proposed. Uh, similar to the last plan, uh, highlighted in green are the closest wetlands. Highlighted in pink is the hundred foot review area. Highlighted in yellow is the front yard setback. So we can see that we. Very efficiently worked within the allowable buildable area. Uh, we have the septic system, uh, here with the reserve area. We have the proposed house and porches. Uh, there's a little piece of the turnaround of the driveway and then the barn. That's just inside the hundred foot review area. Uh, tried to keep grading and clearing, uh, to a minimum, uh, through this area. And leave the majority of the buffer on the two acre lots, uh, influx, uh, without being touched. Um, there are wetlands, uh, off to this side of the plan as well, um, which would be to the east. Um, and you can see that buffer there too. So from all sides, we tried to stay in, uh, that buildable area as much as possible. Um. Similar to last application, that's pretty much all the information with the three, twice, two times that we met and on the sidewalk. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer anything yet. But they, the property abound that other wetlands on another property, right? Yes. Yeah, it's on another property to the east. And as mentioned at the sidewalk, uh, there is a vernal pool over there. Um, when the other site was developed and this free split was done for this particular property, there was a conservation easement. Um, that what needed conservation easement around that vernal pool. So the entire hundred foot buffer around that vernal pool is protected along with the pool itself. Um, just the property off to the east, you can see some of the hatching of that easement. So this is the hundred foot with that conservation easement onto this property. You know, easily another fifty feet or so before we're proposing development. So all of that area will remain wooded, uh, to the east.
Michael, I did try and find any environmental report or whatever on the adjacent site for the subdivision. I did not find any of that.
Okay. Yeah, one was on Rich, Richard Snarsky prepared one at that time. It was a few years ago. Um, but, um, again, that was part of that project and was approved at that time along with conservation. That's when these lots were together. It was a larger part. Yeah, it was a larger eleven plus acre property. I believe in this two acre building lot was cut out of that eleven plus. The nine or eight or nine, whatever remaining acreages with the other lot. Did you put any sedimentation erosion controls on your plan so that? Yeah, there's silt fence surrounding all the clearing limits. Okay. And then we have a stockpile area as well. Uh, the third sheet that we always include with our plans has E N S, uh, details and all the narrative. Um. Standard details for E N S control, including a gravel construction entrance. Um, and then all of these notes in this E N S narrative provides a construction sequence in accordance with the Connecticut D P manuals. Um, and also, uh, requires that the contractor notify Eric prior to construction. Uh, on there and that once the contractor has chosen, that information is provided to Eric as well, so that he can contact them if there are any issues.
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Thank you.
Hey, Jerry, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the, um, any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, it passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right, so moving on to the continued public hearing. Site number one of ours is a three oh eight dash one mile thick road LLC applicant. And three oh four and three oh eight dash one mile thick, placing the material and clearing the soil and brush within a hundred and one of the wetlands. Are you sick of us?
Are you sick of me? Now, Phil.
I'm not getting the middle of that one.
Project attorney sucks.
I'll start us off. For the record, um, attorney William McCoy of Howard, Howard and McCoy. Seven thirty six, north of the London Turnpike, Uncasville, Connecticut. Um, we had a field walk, um, sidewalk on the tenth of, I believe on the tenth of February, it goes back a while now. Um, and at that field walk, we identified two areas to be used for mitigation purposes. And with respect to that, um, we have a report that was submitted, they've stated. February tenth also of two thousand twenty five, um, by Joe DeRoe, who's here to go through it. Generally speaking, that's a mitigation plan and an attempt to meet the, the request of some members of the, the commission, um, to do mitigation. Uh, or remediation as a result of this, this application, which is an after the fact application for work, uh, done without permits. Um, so with that in mind, I would, uh, I would ask Mr. DeRoe to come up and do brief presentations.
Good evening. For the record, Joseph Hart DeRoe, uh, certified soil scientist. Um, assuming you guys all have copies of the, uh, mitigation code. Um, this basic design of a mitigation plan is, is pretty much patterned after, uh, typical Army Corps standards on the Corps of Engineers. Um, basically, the first thing we do is we, uh, want to establish like a baseline. We want to evaluate, uh, the wetland areas adjacent to and, and within the mitigation areas. And take a look at what's growing there. Um, my, my plan here was to basically, uh, design a, uh, emergent or, um. Wet meadow style wetland. Um, the reason I did that is because I wanted to try to contrast. Um, to the existing wetlands there now, which are either, uh, forested wetlands or scrub shrub. So I thought the diversity of habitat would be a, a good idea. Um, section number one, uh, deals with supervision and monitoring, which is very key. Um, what we want to do is, you know, when this mitigation happens, um, not only am I going to be there to, or me or, or sort of other certified soil scientists. Going to be there to, you know, design it, uh, look at the conditions as we excavate. Cause we have the basic plan is to excavate down into the ground, groundwater table. And then we then, um, construct a wetland soil, you know, made up of organic matter, topsoil. Um, we design topography and it's very key that that supervision is done, that one gets done correctly. Um, so my, my basic plan is that, um, you know, reconstruction, we do a baseline report. We adjust things. We're going to be taking care of invasive species. Um, we want to make that site as successful as we can. Um, for the first, uh, month during the growing season, disconstructed, it'll be inspected weekly. After that, it'll be inspected monthly. Um, and then we also look as far out as two to five years. So, uh, twice a year, um, we'll be looking at it to, again, to adjust, you know, for some reason, we don't see the proper groundwater we want. Or we see invasive species coming in, or the seed mix doesn't take, we can adjust, we can reseed, we can irrigate, we can do things like that. Um, as far as the construction timeframe, again, we want to look at this in the spring. Um, you know, for, obviously for, for growing season, um, it doesn't mean that it can't start now if they wanted to get going. Doing some of the excavation and things like that. Um, it's just imperative that it gets seeded during the proper time of year. That way it, uh, it's, it's, it's got its most successful, uh, chance. Um, again, when I speak about removal invasives, it's kind of a no brainer. You know, there are, uh, this multi floor rows in there. There's autumn olive in the upland. So what we try to do is get rid of that verbally mechanically. Um, so that that can't reseed into the, into the wetland area that we're going to be doing. Um, E N S basically is going to be pretty straightforward. It's either going to be state hay bales or silt fencing between the existing wetlands. Um, in the mitigation area that way during, uh, excavation and construction, if there are, you know, significant storm events, things like that, we're going to. Um, keep an eye on it. Um, you know, as far as inspections, I want to see, um, uh. Inspections during every, before and after every significant rain event. So anything, any kind of storms to over half an inch, um, then E N S measures need to be looked at, you know, beefed up. And then afterwards, you know, if there are issues, sometimes you get these three inch rainstorms. Um, I really don't expect anything really to happen here because it's very, really flat, you know, the, the topography and everything adjacent to these areas is, is. Pancake flat. So I don't expect any, you know, tons of water coming down slopes or anything like that. So. Um, hydrology, very key here. We want to, you know, again, we want to monitor. Uh, we want to make sure that that groundwater table is there for at least, um, at, at least the, the, the growing season. You want to see a good, good eight weeks of, of hydrology there. Um, during my wetland delineation work, when I did the, um, you know, borings with the soil logger. I could see the water table is not far from, from where, uh, the surface of the soil is right now. We're probably looking at. Uh, either at the surface or just under the surface for the majority of the growing season. Uh, a lot of the areas that I delineated, uh, as uplands were actually inundated when I did the, uh, the wetland delineation. So. As much as thirty percent organic matter. So that's really important for, again, we want to germinate those, uh, the wetland seed mix. Um. We want to do, uh, at least the eight to twelve inch, uh, horizon on that, on, on the organics, again, for, for the longevity of the seed mix. Um, topography, again, another real key point here. Um, I want to mimic the pit and mound topography that we see in wetlands. Um, if you're not familiar with that, a lot of times in our, in the over mature forests, um, in true wetland hydrology, you get red maples, oaks, things like that. They don't wet, they don't, uh, um, they, they shallow. When we get heavy, heavy rains, things like that, winds, they blow over. And what you get is where the stump pulls out of the ground, you get a pit. And then all the soil attached to the, you know, the roots of the tree, eventually that tree dies and then you get them out. And that topography is really cool because you have uplands and wetlands right next to each other. So it's really important for amphibians and, and, uh. And hopefully some of these, you know, vernal pool species that are floating around, you know, we can, we can get them established in there as well. Vegetation, um, I decided to go with the New England, uh, instead of going with New England wet mix, which is a very typical. Um, wetland, uh, mix, seed mix. Um, I decided to go with the, um, the roadside mix. Because it's more tolerant of inundated conditions. So in both of these two areas, um, the. The, I think the hydrology is there for the majority of the growing season to be very wet. Um, so I wanted to see, uh, one, I wanted to see a, a species mix that can tolerate inundation for extended periods of time and not drown. Um, and the also, the other good thing about this mix is it also includes, uh, scrub species in there. Um, so, you know, we can, we can kind of see this wetland evolve from a emergent wetland into a scrub shrub. Wetland where we get, we get, um, shrubs. Um, signage, one of the things I recommend, um, really, really important. Um, is to have some kind of signage around our, our newly constructed wetlands. That, that down the road, that basically stops any, any potentials for intrusion. You know, if something's going on there, if it's a, a sep- a separate owner, they know, they may not be aware. That there's a, a constructed wetland in there. And if they see wetland bumper signs or wetland placards that say, do not enter instructed wetland, something along those lines. Posted at twenty five foot intervals. Um, I recommend they usually get put on, um, a metal T post, you know, the heavy. Heavy metal T posts or, uh. heavy metal T posts or, uh, pressure treated, you know, whatever, uh, whatever's going to stay there for the longest. Um, we also have a, uh, a list here in the in the thing of the, uh, different species. Um, you know, again, lastly, monitoring, we're going to why, we're going to monitor reconstruction, during construction, post construction, to ensure that, uh, that these, these wetlands success or success. Um, any reports, I recommend any reports that get written and be forwarded to, uh, your wetlands agent. So he can have those in the file, that way if, uh, if during, uh, the construction period, anything needs to change, we need to go back in there and re, you know, reconstruct or or, uh, or try to dig deeper to, you know, to get her hydrology that doesn't establish, then you guys are, uh, in the, in the loop. That's basically it for this part.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions I can answer off the top? Could you, could you flip the map, the map back to the? The, the one that showed the?
Yep. Well, this is the mitigation area number one, which is near the driveway. And then the other one here was over the western part of the site.
So, so number two, when we, when we looked at that, it looked like it was pretty much the same kind of topography up there?
It's pretty close, yep.
Yeah, would it, would it, would it be, is there a more, I mean, is that area, if it was to be expanded, as suitable as the area that you've marked, say to, say to the left, looking at the map?
As suitable as this area?
The upper one there. Yep, so if just looking at it, yeah.
Um, yeah, that, that, um, you're looking at probably a couple more feet of elevation in there.
Hmm.
Um, the reason I designed it for this, this footprint right in here is because it is literally at or within inches of, uh, the microtopography in the wetlands there. If we were to expand this area and make it bigger, um, we would be just looking at, uh, a lot more, a lot more excavation to get down into that water table. So in this mitigation area here, I'm expecting, uh, for them to dig down maybe a foot through the subsoil.
What about to the other side of that?
And and get and get to the water table. If they were down here, we're looking at probably two feet or three feet of excavation.
What about on the other side?
Over here?
Yeah.
That's a, this is a, this is a big mound, so what happened, my, my guess is twenty, thirty years ago, when, uh, whoever was in there exploring around and digging, um, they over excavated in this area right here, and it's very obvious because if you look at the topography all the way around this wetland, it's, there's five or six feet of of elevation. Um, they over excavated in this area, looking for whatever they were looking for. And this here is a big mound that got pushed into the remaining wetlands or along the remaining wetlands, so we have a big high point here, that's two, four, six, is almost, uh, six feet of elevation there, and I really didn't want to see any mitigation happening here because there's a water course that kind of flows right on that side, and I really just didn't want to see any any excavators in there, I didn't want to see hydraulic oil leaks, I didn't want to see anything like that. I would rather have the site worked on from these uplands in here. I don't know if you've ever seen what happens when an excavator blows a hydraulic line. You're literally talking about, you know, thirty, forty gallons like that. Uh, so I'd rather see the site operated from here. Um, when they pull the organics, you know, the top soils out of here, this area here is nice and flat, they can stockpile those, those, um, those top soils, do the mixing of the organics, you know, the leaf, leaf matter, composted leaves and things like that. Um, I just, I wouldn't want to see that kind of activity going down there.
Yeah, Michael.
And I made, you know, this is kind of the first time I was out there in the light.
Hmm, sure.
It seems to me that, I guess it's to the north of the larger, no, the, we're going to go back to this. One near the road, yeah.
Yep.
There's a large pile of fill adjacent to that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be this right here. Yep.
Yes.
There's a smaller, and there's a smaller one over here. Which was, this was historic, uh, historic film materials that were that were placed there, then the larger pile you're talking about is right.
Was relatively, I was surprised because there was no vegetation or anything on it, it was unstable and it was eroding towards your a mitigation area without any erosion controls. Um, any concerns about that?
Well, again, what we're going to be doing is that that area, we're going to be doing E N S measures all around that mitigation area, so it's going to be isolated from uh, any, any activity, it's going to be isolated from the road, it's going to be isolated from that big, because it actually, the way I, the way I flagged it, it almost comes almost up against on those piles, so yeah, we'll have state hay bales or more, if it's a real steep slope, we'll do state hay bales, uh, backed by silt fencing.
Any other questions? All right. Um, and should I pick the Karen's chance?
Yeah, do you, do you guys have anything else? Part of your? No, my, my plan was to reserve time, obviously, this is a public hearing and you've got public here to talk, that's me.
Thank you.
I was calling on the Karens.
Yeah, Mr. and Mrs. Karen. As interveners, do you want to present anything or ask any questions?
Hi. Peter Karen, four four two Shore Road. I'm not a public speaker, so I did make a letter that I'd like to read. Um, after the January twenty eighth hearing, I went through the town's regulations. I also found the, uh, public hearing procedures for wetlands agencies that was provided by the D E P. I even checked Robert's Rules of Order and found absolutely nothing banning the history of a property from being considered at a public hearing. Um, additionally, all of the historic violations that we're beginning to talk about are exactly what we're looking at today. Um, this is a perfect example of how ignoring the past allows the past to repeat itself, and this has really got to stop. Um, we're talking about, you know, historic devastation and piles of uh, material that was pushed into the wetlands decades ago, and it's still going on, it's got to stop. It really has to stop. Uh, the applicant's attorney attempting to suppress this information, keep it from the public, it's not really a good show of faith, which ironically is what they're asking you as a commission to give them, to trust that violations like this won't happen again like they have been for the past several decades. Um, if the histories of these violations on this property aren't to be considered, then neither should the grandfather clause, and it should go before zoning as such. A member of this commission is a certified soil scientist that has apparently done an extensive amount of research into this matter. As a citizen of Old Line at a public hearing, I, and I think a lot of other people that are here, would like to hear the truth and the whole truth of what's going on in this project. Not a censored version that's projected and manipulated by the applicant's biased team that never saw the property before the destruction. At the hearing on the twenty eighth, Mr. Ren did state that the berm was not placed on top of wetlands soils, but he didn't point out the fact that it was placed on top of film material that was dumped over the river bank on top of the wetlands. This dumping was witnessed by at least five different people. The commission has been provided with photographs of this activity without a permit, as well as photos showing activity taking place while a cease and desist order was in place. And also the general permit that expired, as well as the stormwater runoff permit from D E P. It's clear to see the extent of the area that was altered along the driveway and the driveway widening just by comparing the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty four photos that of the side by side pictures. Uh, and this is just the eight hundred feet along the driveway. Never mind the culvert area or the clear cutting along the wetlands or the work that was done up in the northern portion of the property. Um, so we're not here talking about wood chips. We're here because of the repeated disregard for the neighboring community, the environment, the town regulations and this commission's authority. This commission a year ago required that a complete application plan be submitted and also required that six additional items be included. What's been submitted is an inaccurate application and an equally inaccurate and incomplete plan. They've touched on some of the six requested items, but have failed to meet several of the basic requirements of the inland wetlands and water course regulations. There's at least six violations in section six alone. Uh, additionally, there's, uh, the film material that's used in a wetland is federally federally regulated and there's no EPA application on file. It's grossly estimated the area of disturbance and destroyed areas. There's no alternatives even mentioned, never mind shown in detail this required. Uh, no proposed activities are indicated anywhere on the plan. Um, the elevations are taken off a LiDAR survey from twenty sixteen, not the actual as required. Location of the fertile pools that were found are aren't even indicated on the plan and a complete inventory of the site has never been done. No engineering reports addressing the impacts of filling or blasting or the hydraulic modifications that excavation would cause are addressed. Physical and chemical anal- analysis of film material brought into the site has never been done. Restoration of any disturbed area within the fifty foot buffer of a wetland are not even mentioned. There's no mention of management of stormwater and no dust control management plan exists. The Wetlands Review Plan, W R P one, is incomplete. There's approximately eleven acres of the property that are not shown on the plan, and this is in an area that was subject of a complaint of non permitted work back in January. The application plan is supposed to be for the unpermitted placing of materials, clearing of soil and brush within a hundred feet of the wetlands. But the only thing mentioned on the plan is the area that was clear cut on three oh four. None of the filling, none of the placing of the boulders and the rivers and by the ponds, none of the widening of the driveway or the clearing along the driveway or filling in at the area at the southern most pond are even mentioned. This application and plan are non compliant. And if nothing else mattered, for that reason alone, you should consider Mr. McCoy's comments regarding the Smith Neck Road project, which were the best thing you can do is just deny it for being incomplete. That's it.
Mr. Karen.
We've skipped copy of that.
Yeah, Mr. Karen.
Mr. Karen, just before you go, um, just to make the record clear, I'm not a soil scientist, I'm a professional, actually, I'm an emeritus professional well and scientist. I'm not a soil scientist.
Okay.
Okay. Um, did you have a chance to identify the photo you did, okay, because I haven't had it, been out of town, so I haven't had a chance to look at those. Thank you very much. Today, so. I know. I was not able to come in this afternoon. I'm just letting you know that he did, he did do it today, I, if you look on the back, he has his information on the back, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Did you? Oh, yes, Mrs. Karen. I'm Millie Karen from four four two Shore Road. And, um, I'm very bothered by Mr. Throes Wetlands mitigation report. Um, it's based on number one and number two areas and based on creating these two areas. And what about all the unpermitted destruction that this mitigation is meant for? You know, creating two non existing new things, construction, uh, it just doesn't make sense to me. Uh, you know, um, and the hydraulic leaks that could occur, uh, the heavy equipment that's been sitting there all winter long, right near the river, just sitting there. And what about the potential of those hoses letting go and going right into the river? Um, it's very disturbing. Not sure they would put there just to bother us. And, um, I would like to quote the Nature Conservancy saying, "Our promise to the world is to protect the lands and waters on which all life depends. With your help, it will be kept." We need to protect that river with all that we can. Save the sound, quote, "We are saving endangered lands, fighting climate change, protecting Long Island Sound and its rivers, working with nature to restore ecosystems. The future of our regional environment depends on you. We cannot rest while our waters and lands are in danger. Our work depends on you and others who realize what's at stake. We need your help to protect clear water, clean air and wild places." That's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Karen. Attorney McCoy, you reserve time?
Yes.
Do you, do you want to use it?
Or do you want to see anybody else?
Oh, okay. That's good. Any, any public comments? So again, uh, sounding like a broken record here, two minutes per person. I want to give everyone in this room a chance to be heard. So if you wish to come forward and and, uh, speak, please come forward and I'll give you a little wave at two minutes and we'll let the next person come. That's not to say you can't get back up. Um, and just remembering that, uh, we are, we're Eric, do you have the list of the six conditions? Andy, if not, we, we are limited in looking at this. Oh, yeah, okay, so, um, the, uh, the activities that took place without a wetlands permit are clear cutting within one hundred foot of a wetlands or water course on three oh four Mile Creek Road. Number two, uh, deposition of materials and grading, smoothing and compacting of materials along the dirt roadway leading from the entrance to three oh eight dash one Mile Creek Road to the interior of the site. Three, removal of an outcropping of material located adjacent to the culvert draining the three mile river under the dirt roadway. Number four, placement of fill and creation of a berm along the eastern side of the dirt roadway within one hundred feet of the three mile river. Number five, insufficient and inadequate, inadequate erosion control me- measures leading to siltation in ponds located on the site. And number six, placement of boulders and other large rocks within the banks of the three mile river. So if comments can be limited to what we have to consider in this application, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Come on up. And when you come up, just name an address for the record.
Christopher Kirk, Old Line, five Valley Lane. I just have a quick comment. It has a little obnoxious beginning, but I love our nation and our civics. I've been to a couple of these hearings now. What has transpired is strange. Those who would like to quarry are entirely sympathetic to this body, uh, or at least superficially, and this is a marked change from December. Uh, so, um, now that your power has compelled um, sort of compliance or more enthusiastic compliance, I wonder how this power will reveal your characters, so thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
I'm Rita Malosky, one eighty four Mile River Road. Um, so I was on this, I was at the site walk, um, so first two observations. The erosion, uh, um, the sediment and erosion controls, um, one of them was completely down and not maintained, so that is a concern going forward about how this will be maintained. Another comment was the, um, there was heavy undermining and erosion on both sides of the outlet of the culvert, um, meaning it's extremely undersized and not protected. Um, those two comments for the the site walk. Um, other comments, mitigation area number one is pretty dominant by wetland vegetation, which means it's already getting the inundation. Um, according to the survey plans, it's approximately the same elevation as the According to the survey plans, it's approximately the same elevation as the wetland. So it's at 20 to 21 feet. So I'm not sure how ripping out an area that's already starting to act like a wetland and planting a wetland is going to mitigate for areas disturbed. I just assume that there's no wetland soils there yet, and I believe they'll they'll come, they'll develop. Mitigation area two is surrounded by invasives. So after five years of monitoring, what's going to happen? I know they said it's going to have an invasive plan, but it was like we just walked through all this mugwort and Japanese knotweed all like all over the place. So that's a, I'll say, a concern. And just adding seed mix to mitigation areas, it doesn't keep, again, doesn't keep out the invasives. And so the plantings would be suggested. And on the on the mitigation plan, just adding like who who will receive the monitoring reports, like the commission and specific dates for when the reports would be submitted by spring, it'll be by this time fall, by this time. So that's, those are my comments. So thank you very much.
You.
I don't have a question.
Yeah. Did you?
State on the record your experience. Can you give us comments, please?
Sure. I'm a certified professional soil scientist. I'm a professional wetland scientist, and I'm a certified professional in erosion and sediment control. I have a master's in in wetlands in wetlands and soils and I have 15 years of working in as a consultant for both forensic wetlands to determine impacts and for developments.
Just one other question I have, and thanks for getting that was on the record. Could you tell us about cryptic wetlands? Because some of the paperwork we got mentioned, if you know anything about cryptic fernal pools, excuse me, cryptic fernal pools.
Oh, yeah, those are the ones that are, gosh, I haven't done a fernal pool study in a really long time. Those are the ones that are like, sorry.
That's okay. I was just wondering if you.
I do, I do. It's not, it's just not coming to me, but yeah, sorry.
Okay.
You're coming as a member of the public, so.
Yeah, I was like, we're not trying to touch you. But yeah, I had I had previously done.
But you've heard of cryptic fernal pools. Okay.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't want to cut anyone off. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. All off the Bertram Oak Noggle, 3 Gene Drive. I guess I'd like to confirm that the commission has had a chance to read the letter that was submitted by 53 residents concerning this application.
Yes.
That was dated February 14th.
That's right. I guess I'd like to just clarify a point that was made in that letter. If this permit is granted on the January 28th, Eric said that that would then open the door to his approving the zoning permit. And I think that's a key point. Because last year when we were discussing what you were expecting from the applicant, it was a complete application for what he was intending to do. And this isn't that. And so I think it's important that granting this application doesn't open the door to a zoning application without there being some approval from the Wetlands Commission as to what is intended activities are. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm Paul Tresman from One Haste Lane.
I'm sorry, your name again?
Paul, last name is Tresman.
Could you spell that, please?
T R E S N A M.
Thank you.
Two things I would ask. One, I would ask the commission if you were to approve this. I would like to ask that you impose penalties for failing to monitor. Monetary penalty, I don't know what that could be, but you know, it were $1,000 or a few thousand dollars for failing to monitor and provide a video for, you know, every time that a significant rain event had occurred. And and then the second thing I would ask is that I think, you know, what I've heard and I've come to many of these meetings is, you know, again, it's been promised, not maintained. And I would ask that no further permits can be allowed for this site until the applicant has proven, and I've heard him say that he wants to make good, give him a chance to prove that. So I would say that I think it would be a fair thing to do to, again, you know, have the monitoring, and if you were to approve this, have it be a minimum of 12 months of compliance before he could then be considered for any other parameter on the site. So just a.
Thank you. Thank you. Five seconds. Stand up if you want to speak. All right. Seeing none. Thank you all for your comments and all your written testimony over the last few months. This commission has read every one of them, and we really appreciate you all coming out and voicing your opinions. And with that, I'm going to close the the public comment section and then give Attorney McCoy the chance.
Again, for the record, Attorney William McCoy. There was comment made just a few minutes ago concerning our attempt to prevent the truth from coming out here, and that is far from accurate, and I need to respond to that. This application was made by the applicant after consultation with staff, after consultation with the attorney representing this commission. We have tried to respond as best we can to commission members requests and indications, including a mitigation plan as part of this and as a condition of this application. The six items which are addressed in the plan are exactly what was in the cease and desist order and was the subject of exactly why this application was filed. We've done the best we can to to meet the requirements of those three conditions and to explain to the commission why this plan and this application makes sense moving forward. One of the things that concerns me is that there has been throughout this process, and I don't put this on the commission, but I want to be clear on the record that this application has nothing to do with the operation of gravel operation. This has nothing to do with zoning violations where the past, present, or future. This has to do with your regulations as an inland wetlands and water course commission. And we have done our level best try and respond to what was a problem for sure in that there was work done in upwind review areas without permits, without question. The question becomes what do we do about that now? And this application is a response to that. You have a certified soil scientist who has provided you with an outline of exactly what this application covers, both in terms of mitigation and what would happen if we were to try and reverse course and take everything out. The bottom line to all of this is we will do more damage or potential damage to the wetlands by by taking out the the improvements and or work done in the upwind review area than leaving a stable situation. One person made one comment that I think is important, which is a concern about sedimentation control. You can, within your, within your regulations and within your decision, determine that all sedimentation control measures will be monitored and repaired as necessary, and you have the ability of your staff to be able to go out to the property on whatever occasion they want to determine that that's going on. I don't think that's anything unusual, and I think that the applicant obviously expects that they're going to be monitored during the course of this of this project. The one comment that I have to respond to was a public comment about this opening the door to a permit for the gravel operation. I don't think that your staff said that at all. I think what he said, and he can repeat it himself if he thinks I'm wrong, but I think what he said is he can't do anything with respect to a permit until this is done. Once that's done, he hasn't committed to doing anything, nor do I expect he's going to do anything without proper applications, both on the zoning side and for whatever further work needs to be done for wetlands purposes. What we're trying to do today, and and I think it's been clear by by the town attorney, what we're doing today is bringing this matter forward. It's a clean slate at this point in that this application deals with unpermitted work that is now being asked to be permitted, and it's as simple as that. And and I would ask you therefore to grant this application and understand that. And one other item, small item, but there was a question about invasives coming back into the mitigation areas. One of the reasons for a five-year review is to make sure that those mitigation areas in fact establish viable wetlands areas. That's the purpose behind it all. I will tell you from my own personal experience, I was involved in a 12-year project in the town of Sterling concerning wetlands restoration. And and that's a timeframe that's used generally. You make sure that what you do is monitored over a significant period of time, make sure it's working, and to adjust if it's not. And that's what the applicant is committed to doing. And I appreciate your time and I appreciate your patience. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Jim.
Comments? Again, Joe Ren, professional engineer for the record of Indigo in Old Saybrook, and just a couple of quick clarification points. We keep beating this down, but our focus is these six are these six items, and Bill mentioned it, and we mentioned it before, staff council, I've mentioned it. First thing we did before we even put pen to paper was meet with staff and council and say, what are those six items? What, you know, how do we need to show them? And what do we need to do to fix those? And as discussed at the last meeting by several people, this is what we did. We prepared the plans. The plans show all the six items very clearly. They quantify all the six items clearly. We've been out in the field on two different occasions and pointed all these six items out in the field. We, it's not up here now, but we provided photographs of the existing conditions and nothing has changed since when we first submitted that with the application, other than the leaves probably falling from the trees and snow falling from the sky. Everything has remained the same. There hasn't been any other physical work out there. So that was that was all very well documented in the application and the reports. The application specifically describes the six thing, enumerates the six items and describes them. Then they're shown on the plan. We submitted a survey map of the entire property, copy for the record, that's there. These plans are plans to a reasonable scale so that you can read things clearly and legibly, and they focus on the areas where the six items are, showing one end of the property where there's none of the six items. It's just an extra piece of paper. It's included on the survey map, but again, it's not part of this application. It's not the focus of this, as already discussed. There was a comment made by Mr. Karen that I said that the berms were not placed on wetlands. What I did say was that reading Joe Theroe, certified soil scientist, report and conferring with him at the meeting was that those berms, and correct me if I'm right or wrong, those berms were placed on fill that's decades old because it had root masses in the fill. Correct? So 10, 20, 30 years ago, that fill was placed not by the current owner of the property. The berms were placed on that. So it wasn't wetlands per se at the time that the berms were constructed on that. And that's in Mr. Throes' report, and that's context to some of his discussions with you sitting in this very same seat. There was one other comment made about an engineering report for filling and blasting, but there is no filling and blasting associated with this application. The application, again, goes back to those six things. Maybe at the time, in, you know, any future application, if something, if any activity requiring filling and blasting is proposed at that time, then the commission has every right to ask for those reports at that time. But that's not one of the six items. The town didn't have list the violation or ask us to include a filling and blasting item. That's not, that's not proposed. As far as I'm aware, with the soils on the site and the excavations that I've seen and the data that I've seen so far, blasting requires ledge, and I haven't seen any ledge outcrops in the work area. And I don't have any knowledge that any ledge that required blasting was in color out there. Regardless of that, it's not something that's being proposed as part of this application. So I always feel that I need to come back in the end and just kind of regroup everything and refocus everybody's attention on the application at hand and those six items. So I think Bill did a good job at that, but I just wanted to go through some specific items that were mentioned and then just refocus everyone's attention on the six items that the chair had eloquently done at the start of public comment. So I appreciate that. With that, if Joe, did you want to add anything? Joe Throe? Okay. So with that, I think that concludes the information that we have with you. If you have any questions for us, we can certainly entertain. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Karen.
The the six items that were mentioned were supposed to be included on a complete plan. I gave you 14 items that are not part or not addressed as part of the regulations. The you can spin things a lot of different ways, and I'm sure that there's a spot on that property where there's a berm that's placed on some 30-year-old fill material. But there are five people that witnessed truckloads of material being dumped over the bank, and one of them was sitting at this table. Regarding this plan, you all know the work that's been done there. The cutting, the clearing, the filling. If this plan was permitted before any of that work was done, would you grant that application? To do that work? Because none of it shows here. The only thing that shows is the little area on 304 that was clear cut. There's some mention of rocks to remain or boulders to remain in the river. That doesn't say that they were placed there. I mean, this application is supposed to be for work done in the rears, but it doesn't show the work that was done. And I think it's important to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Yes, and then we're going to cut it off.
Yeah, the plan in the application very clearly, I think, the three, the numerating, all that stuff, and we've seen them physically outfield on the site line. We said these boulders were placed on the edge, and this is one of the violations, this is the fill. We quantified the fill of the application, all the amount on the plan. I don't know how much more clear it can be. Those items, you know, that's true for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, now it's time for us to have our discussion.
Close the hearing.
Oh, yes. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Who would like to open up the discussion?
I think to stay focused and make progress through the.
kind of stay focused and make progress through the six items, I think it would make sense to go through them in order so that we all were addressed and we kind of keep making progress to make whatever decision we're gonna make.
I think it is important now to identify who is participating in this deliberation section. I understand there's a new member who wasn't here for a number of the meetings.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, it's appropriate for him to participate in the deliberation. And if there's an alternate, it'll be appointed that now is the time. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Pete, you're an alternate, right, still?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So I have to make a formal motion?
No, just make a statement.
Okay, so Pete, as alternate, I'm just appointing you to be part of the discussion since you've been here, you know, since the beginning.
And I just will say, the commission is not obligated to make a decision tonight. We have six to five days from now with closing of the public hearing to make a decision. So, you know, keep that in mind as you're going out, see, everything is fresh, so it makes sense to start talking, but.
Okay, and just another thing for your use. I took the liberty of drafting both motions for approval and denial. You are not obligated to look at these or consider them. But at least as starting points, I wanted to get stuff out, get into the record. I spent first page or so going all over everything that's in the record, just so you have it available to you. I have the files with me this evening in case you would like to go through them. And again, I just figured I would start with something if that was something the commission was interested in you doing.
I just
Yeah, Michael.
Have some initial comments. And I sort of feel responsible for where we are because I remember early on suggesting that we should take care of this matter through administrative means, and we started to do that. Took a while to get an application. And I've spent a lot of time reviewing stuff, including all the stuff that's been submitted by the applicants and all of the concerned neighbors and citizens. I don't know that I need any additional time to make a recommendation on this application. Others may, and if that's the case, I think we should, you know, since, I don't know, I'm a little rusty on my rules. I thought it was 35 days after the close of the hearing, but 65 is better. So I'd go with that, but I'm prepared to make a recommendation to deny this application tonight for incompleteness and to summarize the reasons why.
Anyone else?
And there's one critical one that I would focus on, one reason.
Well, if, if you want to discuss it now, so we all have the benefit of hearing it, go right ahead.
Okay. Is the application complete? Well, first, go back a bit. We've already concluded there's been a significant impact on the wetland and the water course just by having the public hearing. And if you look at our regulations, there are a whole series of things that we have to go through to make a decision. Okay, the first is the application complete, and what does that mean? If we deny it for incompleteness, the applicant can come back and address those points that we specifically comment on in our decision, okay? And we have to state on the record the reason for our decision, whichever way it is, okay? And I made a list of things, a lot of which has been said. What are some of the missing items in this application? Okay, and I pointed some of these out early on. We don't have a complete wetland boundary on the site. The applicants mentioned the fact that he found a potential vernal pool, and I'll, I'll say that. But it's not located on the plan. The members of the public have indicated that there are cryptic vernal pools. And what's a cryptic vernal pool? Well, it was a term developed by Michael Clements, who's an amphibian specialist and written books on vernal pools and how to protect them. And he identified a cryptic vernal pool as a vernal pool that doesn't really meet the classic definition of a vernal pool, an isolated pond of water that's not connected to a stream. And so the critters can, don't have fish to eat the eggs or the tadpoles. Well, it turns out that there are other vernal pool habitats that the neighbors have commented on. And so when you have a riverine system with vegetation along the edge of the boundary, even though there might be fish in the river, they can't get into the wetlands along the shore. And that provides a vernal pool habitat, even though it's not a classic vernal pool. So I think, given the fact that we have a 400-foot upland review area around vernal pools, it's important for us to know where the vernal pools are on this site. We're entering the right time of year for vernal pools, spring. So, and, and we've been sort of handicapped in some ways because we don't really have our own environmental consultant, which we probably should have employed early on to help us analyze fact from fiction. I mean, as an individual member, as a professional wetland scientist, I can have different opinions than their consultant. Okay, and then you weigh whether or not you believe one or the other. Okay. Mitigation really isn't proposed where it's needed. I mean, I went out and looked at the vernal pools or the, the wetland mitigation sites. One already has wetland vegetation on it, as commented on tonight. Really doesn't need any restoration. The other one is an old hole dug when they were excavating out there. We're not near the area that was really disturbed, okay? And where we really need restoration. The other thing that we learned at the last hearing was, and I miss this, and I'm just getting old and rusty. I didn't even consider it that we're in an A-zone, a 100-year floodplain. Okay, once you're in a 100-year floodplain, any amount of fill in that floodplain, and this is in the zoning regs as well, should be analyzed by a registered professional engineer to determine the impact of that amount of fill on flooding, okay? We probably should have asked that early on. I'd asked Eric to send me a cross-section of the berm so I could have calculated the amount of fill that's been deposited along the 1,300-foot length. I, I was away, so I, I didn't do my calculations. But we should have the 100-year floodplain, where is the flood zone A on this property? A plan, a, a, a map was submitted in our record by the neighbor showing a lot of it as within the 100-year floodplain. Okay, as a matter of fact, some of the huge fill piles, I think, are in the 100-year floodplain. There needs to be some analysis on what are the impacts of those? Well, I'm just gonna focus on the berm because that's what we're here about. What, what are the impacts of that? Okay? The berm, as I understand it, was installed to minimize flooding of the applicant's property because it floods pretty regularly. And when we were out on the field visit, just beginning of the month, it was obvious that water had flowed across the road. Whether the culverts couldn't handle the capacity, I don't know. But I would like to see some analysis of the size of those culverts. But is the berm doing anything the applicant had hoped to do? There's been no analysis of that. If the berm isn't having no effect, then I'm not sure why we would permit it to stay in that location. If you look at flood regulations and they're in the zoning regs, we should have the benefit of, of a civil engineer analyzing whether or not there has been, whether or not the berm is effective, whether or not it's affected the flood level and the flood plain. It's, it's just required, and it needs to be done certainly before any zoning approvals are gone. But probably the most critical thing is that according to, well, section 10.2B of our home regs, under factors for consideration, the applicant hasn't presented any feasible or prudent alternatives to the activities proposed. And we can't, we have to, we have to, as a commission, find that there are no feasible or prudent alternatives to the activities that are proposed before we could issue an approval. So I need feasible and prudent alternatives to be part of a new application if we deny this for incompleteness. Because we don't have any facts really before us to analyze feasible and prudent alternatives. I could suggest some, and I bet you some of my members of this commission could suggest some. Like maybe if there was a pipe large enough to pass the river flows, the need for the berm would be eliminated. If we didn't need berm, then we could do all the wetland mitigation right along the side of the water course and wetland that was disturbed. So I, you know, I am prepared to make a motion to deny the permit for incompleteness for all of those reasons.
Thank you.
Or to discuss those. But the critical thing is, no feasible or prudent alternative has been presented to us, and we need one.
Thank you. Discussion on that?
Like, check a few things. I'm not a voting member. This is entirely up to you to vote on. As I recall, looking at the minutes, you did not hold a public hearing because of, this was determined to be by this commission if he's a significant activity. You decided to hold a public hearing due to significant public interest, which is different. So I am unclear. I will let Ed Cassell comment about whether you need to find feasible and prudent alternatives. That said, again, you have testimony from the applicant, whether you find that there are feasible and prudent alternatives in there. I will leave those factual determinations to the commission. I have gone through all of this. I did not find that cross-section of the berm that you were requesting. I asked the applicant to write another copy. They indicated they didn't have it either. I, I know it exists. I cannot find it. At your request, I did have Mr. Karen come in and label all the photographs for dates. He will have those available to you. Much of what you've said is detailed in my motion to deny. You can certainly feel free to look through that. Again, you are not obligated to vote this evening. If you are prepared to, that is entirely up to the commission as well. So I think I'll sort of leave it there and then turn it back over to the commission for, for further comment.
Tom, did you want to enumerate and go by the six?
I mean, I think it would be a good place to start. At least we can address any concerns that we have with the individual items. The first one was the clearing, and I think that one was pretty much involved at this point because it's up and allowed to grow over the last year. So I don't think that that one's really a concern anymore unless somebody disagrees on that one. And the next one was basically grading the, was grading along the road, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
And I guess also this is for retaining work that's already been done. So I guess my question would be what the activities are that you would want alternatives to?
Well, I could propose those. Certainly one would be to put in the right-sized culvert that would pass the flow of the Three Mile River. Some engineering calculations would have to be done. Once that was done, I think that would address some of the flooding problems associated with the site, not all of them, because it's in a, you know, flood zone A, it's gonna flood. So that's a feasible and prudent alternative the applicant could analyze. But I would still like to know if the berm having any effect on reducing the flooding. I mean, I'm not a engineer. Well, I was an army engineer and calculated lots of sizes and cover pipes when we were building roads. The obvious thing, the first time I visited the site was culvert. It's way too small for the river. If the pipe works and it reduces the amount of flooding, we can remove the berm. And then we can have him restore 1,300 feet of disturbance along the river. I mean, it, I think trees have been removed. The neighbors have seen trees removed. We could require some significant planting along the river where all of disturbance has occurred. I mean, I would, I've never seen this level of disturbance along the river.
My understanding was part of the reason we were not discussing taking the berm out was that we were concerned about re, or disturbing what was a stabilized berm. That was,
You know.
I'm not making that argument. I'm just saying that that was
I know. And, and I know you don't know me, okay? I'm a professional wetland scientist. I would disagree with their commentary, okay? I mean, if I could prepare a report, I've seen a half acre of fill removed from wetlands along the Houston River. And just the elevation restored, no plantings, and all of the wetland came back. It happened to be a tidal wetland, but it's very, very similar. I'm not afraid of the impacts associated with moving a few boulders. It's insignificant. I'm not afraid of losing some, should a new operating piece of equipment have a hose break? I'm not really concerned about that small level of impact. By court order, I've seen walls moved back 15 to 20 feet that have been filled in wetlands and the wetland restored. Okay, what you do is we put up some sedimentation erosion controls along the river while the materials being removed. No big deal. And, you know, if you don't let me testify as an expert witness, we should hire someone when the new application comes in. But the, the testimony is, is overwhelming, I think, of what's happened here. And just focusing on our points, the berm, you know, is the berm doing any? You'd have to conclude, is it doing anything? There's been no analysis of that. Just no analysis. There are other feasible and prudent alternatives that the, the applicant might come up with, but we have, and I think the, the reason we went through this whole process is because everybody that went out there said, oh my God, we've never seen anything like this. That's significant impact that this wetland and water course quarter, it's one of the most, it's probably not the most significant wetland and water course quarter that's in the town because it has been disturbed in the past. But, I mean, their own assessment tells you how, what, what a high quality wetland and water course quarter this is. So I think it's, it's under our ability to, to help restore that. Is it gonna be like it was? No. And I could be reasonable. I don't see large amounts of fill coming out, but I see it being stabilized. Maybe some shrubs and trees installed. And, you know, why is the road so wide? If you look at aerial photos, it wasn't that If you look at aerial photos, it wasn't that wide. It could be much narrower and we could do the wetland water course restoration. So that's another feasible alternative that you could shrink the size of the road, but that that hasn't really been considered and it has to be. Given we have sixty five days, can the applicant modify their application prior to voting with concerns? No, no, they have to come in with another application, but we could give them guidance.
So part of the difficulty here, I think, is that we're we're talking about things in retrospect. We're trying to uh judge an application based on things that have already occurred. So we're supposed to pull out a magic ball and say what we would have done if all of this was presented to us months ago before it happened. And we were at that site previously because it was reported that berms were insufficient. And we went out there and we made a big effort to increase the berms and silt fencing. So I I for one, I I feel if this was all done ahead of time, that we would have had a problem with uh improving a berm or come up with an idea telling the applicant that he has to do a study for the culvert. In all fairness.
But that's not our role as commissioners, okay? The fact that we don't know what was, I can tell you what was there by looking at aerial photos.
Okay, what part of what part of the six cease and desist items does that cover? Because that's why we're here, Mike. We're here for six cease and desist items that we put together and that we charged the applicant with. We're not, we're not here for a new wetlands permit for any kind of operation. We're certainly not here for zoning permit operation.
I agree.
And the I, the, some of this can probably, I would imagine, I would almost guarantee that a lot of this could be bought up if a new permit is bought to us for that in the future, but that's not what we presented.
See, I think the commission,
Charged him with.
I think the commission made a mistake in not really knowing what was going on at the site. When you issued that for cease and correct order. You had no clue as to what was going on on the site. The photos really, and I haven't had a chance to really talk and to look at them very closely. But they clearly show that there were more activities going on than just the little area that we that I first looked at when I came on last year.
And 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 again, that would be beyond the six items.
I don't think we have to limit ourselves to those six items. What we're doing is we're analyzing.
I would, I would ask counsel that question then.
We do for this application and and I think it's the history of the six items, I think, is important because the six items came from, as John said, Eric cease and desist. That's that's what started this and you upheld the cease and desist order, I think, in February for this point, a year ago. Um, so if there was fill twenty five years ago or five years ago, that wasn't part of that cease and desist, doesn't mean it can't be part of a future cease and desist, but for this application today, we need to focus in on their application, which directly they attempted directly address those six items.
Right, and I think we have to conclude. I think we have to conclude, were the activities that occurred significant?
Well, I think I think frankly, that ship has already left the barn. As Eric said, there there was an opportunity for this commission to make determination of whether this is significant impact activity. My understanding of that is that did not happen. Okay? So to the question on feasible and prudent alternatives, you you're not required to make a finding that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist in this application.
Yeah, I would disagree.
That's, that's what your regulations state, so.
Professional wetlands scientist.
You've said that a lot, Michael.
Let me, let me just make one point. You can consider it. You can consider whether feasible and prudent alternative exists. You're not required to make a finding that one does not exist. So that's perhaps the distinction that we're missing, but in this application. So yes, there's a large history here, some of which may be grandfathered, some of which might need deep permits, some of which might be in a flood zone, some of which might need zoning permits. But your charge is they're coming in and asking permission to do the six items. Clearing on three oh four mile creek road, putting down millings on the the driveway, removing and outcropping of material, placement of film creating the berm. I actually thought the berm, and maybe I misunderstood this. This is, and again, I'm not a voting member either. I thought the berm was to prevent erosion from going into the river versus this way. It may have the dual effect, but it, I I thought it was a protection measure that, again, I I don't recall that being specifically stated. So I was trying to look through the application materials if there was something sufficient, something more sufficient.
Um, that was in a lot of our minutes or prior discussion.
Yeah, in insufficient and inadequate erosion control measures, which leading to siltation in the ponds
Yeah.
and the placement of boulders in the wetlands. So these are all things that have been done. And to to Mike's point, this, you can deny this application. You can deny it for incompleteness. A lot of the things that you said, I would say, yep. Um, you know, they don't have complete boundary of the wetlands, the vernal pool location and the four hundred foot review. I don't, my recommendation is if you deny, I wouldn't get into cryptic vernal pools because that's not defined in your regulations. So including that in a motion to deny is a slippery slope.
I just, I would keep it very, very simple.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just making points on your on your application. Uh, I think if you you could, you could make a determinate, or not your 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 comments. You could make the conclusion, the board could make the conclusion that the mitigation that they're proposing is not adequate. Because they conducted all these activities without permits and what they're asking to do is not adequate. So that's, again, matter of incompleteness. Um, so that 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 is an option. We, Eric drafted an app, uh, a motion to deny that could, that makes a lot of the same points regarding why this application could be deemed to be incomplete. But for for the discussion, I think it's either that motion to deny for incompleteness or a motion to approve. Um, because they have provided documentation and evidence that the six things that were in the cease and desist order that basically brings them back to zero. Right? They're not allowed to do anything more other than now there's no longer cease and desist. That gets withdrawn, the lawsuit gets withdrawn. If they go out, if he goes out there tomorrow and puts another boulder, there could be another cease and desist and we could go be all back in here, right? Which nobody wants to do. But that's, that's the the big picture question that the commission needs to to consider at this point.
And again, I did draft motions both ways. And if you want to rush, sort, dig through them and see what you like or dislike about any of them. Um, you're free to craft your own motions and we're getting free to come back in a month and try again after you've had a time to think it over further. So there is no immediacy to making a decision tonight if that's not where the condition is at.
If it's denied, what is the next, like, step?
The next?
Reapply with, based on kind of what the denial was, or does it go more in the court?
Well, we have a court case that could presumably continue. But again, they are always free to reapply, uh, unlike ZBA or certain other things where there's a period where you can't reapply. They could come back next month with an application. So this is not, it, no matter what happens here, this is not the end of the story. They will have to come back to you with a new application, no matter what. Because even if you approve this, there are things that need new applications, such as a detention basin, um, which uh, attorney, sorry, attorney, an engineer, Joseph Rand indicates will need to be put in, um, no matter what, because they don't have service for discharge permit. Um, they're going to have to come back to you for a wetlands application for any future activity. So whether or not this is approved or denied, you will be seeing probably in a short order, a new wetlands application.
And that's why I think it's important to deny it for incompleteness. And then just by my talking, they've gotten some hints as to at least what I'm looking for in a future application that's doable.
I'll make, I just need to make one other comment about the culvert. I mean, the culvert is an existing condition that has been there very long time, right? We we don't know exactly when it went in, but.
I'm, I'm pretty sure I know.
When do you think?
Now, recognize,
Yeah, you're looking at aerials.
Looked at aerial photos since nineteen thirty four. And I don't, I've the next available aerial photography that's digitally available to a citizen is nineteen fifty one. I don't see a road there in nineteen fifty one. It's a long time ago. I was born in nineteen forty seven.
Well, either way.
So, you know, I don't, I don't know when it went in there. I just, it's hard to tell. But I haven't really found.
Whether whether the replacement of the culvert, which again, based upon the scope of this application, right, this application, not the whole property as a gravity pit, right, not the big picture, but this application, whether that's a feasible and prudent alternative.
We get to decide that.
You do, but the, you caution yourselves on whether that is actually feasible or prudent from that perspective.
Okay. Filling in the A zone requires engineering analysis.
On the zoning side.
Exactly, exactly.
On the zoning side.
Keep our well on town.
Did you, you know?
I have not reviewed this on the zoning side.
Zone enforcement officers have issued permits in violation of the zoning regs.
With whether that. Mike, but the point is, the point is, if this is going to be denied as incomplete, let's make sure we put together defensible reasons why it's incomplete.
Exactly.
Okay, that's, that's my advice.
Well, okay. I don't know how many of you know, but alluvial soils are regulated wetland soils. Okay? We haven't really gotten, uh, oh, we've gotten wetlands delineated, but we haven't gotten a detailed soils report. I didn't add that into the list of things in the area.
For that on the record during the plan, the public hearing was open.
It's irrelevant.
It is not relevant at all. You're going to bring it up during deliberations using your expertise. You have to have raised it at a time when you.
You wouldn't let me use my expertise.
No, I wouldn't let you.
Let's not go there.
No, we are not going to go there. Okay.
Be civil, be civil, okay? Me and Ed are paid attorneys. We are looking out for the good of this commission. I'm here as a volunteer, as a chair.
So am I.
I understand that. I want you to be civil to the attorney and to the Z E up. Okay? Because I am not going to accept that kind of behavior anymore. I don't like the raised voices. I don't like the arguments over email that I'm CC'd on constantly. Okay?
At this point, I think that you are limited to the information that is already in your record. And therefore, if information is not already in the record, I would strongly recommend that you not bring up new arguments and new information during deliberations that the applicant has not had the opportunity to respond to. Um, and that comes straight out of Mark Grant's procedures outline that I wrote for ten years. So I am respectfully requesting that you limit your deliberations to the items that you have already heard of during the course of the public hearing.
The A zone is part of our record.
Why don't, would you, would the commission like to see the motions that we drafted?
Sure.
I I only have six copies. I can go off here and run off the world here. Okay, we can pass some of these around. Much of the first page, you will notice, is the same from motion to approve, motion to deny. Um, simply because it is a detailing of the items that are in the record. Um, from there, you have different findings. Um, the findings obviously then give you the result at the end of the findings as to whether you approve or deny. If you approve, I have listed six or seven possible conditions that are a starting place. You can certainly feel free to add additional con- conditions beyond what I have proposed. But again, I wanted just to give you basic motions, even though they're three pages long, they're still basic motions, um, that you can then play with, alter, amend. I take no pride in authorship. You are free to hack it to pieces and put it back together. I don't care. But at least now you have something that gives you my thoughts as to where you can start your discussions.
So maybe this would be a time to schedule a continued meeting.
I think it would be the next regular meeting.
Yeah, it exists. I was worried if I not meet the thirty five days.
Sixty five to us. It's under H seventy, it's sixty five days to open a public hearing, thirty five days to close, though it can be extended, and then sixty five days after you close the public hearing to make a determination. So we are well within the sixty five days to get us to the March meeting if you'd like to take it up to your March meeting. You don't even need a motion to do that.
I think there's a lot to digest here and I would, I I for one would like to consider what we've heard tonight and as well as uh other material that's been emailed to us over the course of this hearing. That's part of the record, obviously, and come back and deliberate as a commission with all that information on hand.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to come to a conclusion in a reasonable amount of time tonight.
Okay, and you only at this point have one item on your March agenda at this point in time, so it's a relatively clean agenda. You're going to go to one site, walk, have one item on the agenda, so you'll have pretty much all evening, starting from scratch next time.
You say that, now we're going to have eight applications.
The new applications will only be set for sidewalk, right?
Oh, true, true. Yeah, so we'll just have a lot of sidewalks to schedule.
But scheduling of sidewalks hopefully is a less intrusive issue than actually having to discuss and deliberate on applications.
All right, let's do that. Okay. So we'll talk about this again, uh, our regular meeting in March, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month at six o'clock.
And that's the twenty fifth of March, just we put dates on that.
Thank you. Oh, twenty fifth of February was sidewalk. I was like, whoops. I heard twenty fifth.
Of March, yeah, okay, um, that's our next meeting scheduled for twenty fifth of March, so welcome back for that.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to other correspondence, uh, which is item number five on our agenda, we have an administrative update.
Okay, I would like to introduce down to get the end of the table who's been right, patient and quiet all evening. Um, Fallow McQuarrie, who is our new wetlands tech here, who's filling in for Kim, who is retired. Um, Fallow, do you want to say hi and introduce yourself?
Hi, Fallon. I'm very excited to be here. Um, yeah, so I have a lot to learn and taking it all in.
Welcome. Been here one week now, so very excited. Keep coming back. I'm amazed.
Yeah, right. Sounds like there's new some, some new tech already implemented here.
Yes, yes.
Look at the technology.
Welcome.
Okay, the other thing I want to say, and I have been saying it previously, and I was sort of waiting for gap when we didn't have this on the agenda, um, I've gone back through the DEP's model updates to their regs through two thousand and fifteen, when they stopped making further updates. Um, I have put together a list of how the reg should be amended to conform to the updates through that date. When things calm down here a little bit, um, when you have a little more time on your hands, I would like to come with that proposal for you to update your regs to include these new changes. I will get them to Attorney Casella, make sure he's on board with them. Um, and then again, once the three oh eight matter is finished and you have a little more time, I will come, I I'll propose that as as a formal amendment to your applica- to your regulations. So that's sort of on the horizon for later this year.
You thought you could get rid of them. All right.
Eric, I just had one question because if if this application and maybe some future ones, I think we really need access to getting a consultant to help us analyze well, applications that are difficult.
What can be done?
How would we go about?
During, when you receive the application.
Right.
And again, when you're setting a public, a site walker, determine a significant activity at. At that point, you can request that we hire a consultant to go out and do that sort of work.
My concern is that. For me, fifteen minutes in the dark isn't enough to do and. To have a feel for that even, you know, I mean, and it must be for all of you too. I mean. A, a couple of the sites that I didn't have a problem with tonight, we didn't even get to see the well, and because I, you know, we didn't bring our headlamps. And it just seems to me that we ought to develop them, and I don't think we should. All of us need to go out to all of the sites, because some of them are really minor. Um, and in order to save our time, it would be if we developed some sort of system with the staff. That could say, oh man, we really, all the members have to go out to this one because it looks bad and that would be. It would, we just need more time than fifteen minutes to come to that conclusion. I could certainly help Eric with that or any staff member. Or anybody that would want to come along, so long as we don't have a quorum.
You know, I, I, well, first of all, any subcommittee forum for that purpose, if there's a quorum, it would need to be noticed and all, yeah. So the, the FOIA is pretty strict about that, but the, the second thing is particularly for something like three way dash one. I don't think you need a sightwalk to, to make a determination, if you wanted to make a determination that there's a significant activity and you want to be hired an expert. So when they come back, and again, one way or the other, they're, they're coming back. If you want me to hire an expert, then put that in your original decision and I will go.
Do we have to do RFPs and that sort of thing, or do we have contacts with folks or?
We certainly can hire people to, to go out and do that sort of thing.
I don't see that happening a lot.
It, well, again, again, if it happens once every year or two years, that's fine. And again, there is money in the budget to do that sort of thing. And again, we do have the power under our regulations to actually ask the applicant to compensate us for going out and doing that. So if you would like me to do that, then make that clear and I will make that part of the application fee that is required.
See what I'm saying? When the application comes in. We, we see stuff pretty quickly because we get digital copies and things, but until you really see the site. It's hard for us to.
Old Saybrook has an entire ordinance devoted to this. Um, which we don't have here, but the ordinance in Old Saybrook literally allows each of their commissions to ask for a hundred and fifty percent of the. Anticipated value of reviewing the site as part of the application fee.
So when, well, we're going to be reviewing our fees, right?
Yes, you're reviewing your fees, and again, as a, the hundred fifty percent number comes from the organs that Old Saybrook has that would need to pass. Through the board of selectmen through town meeting, but potentially could be something that we can raise the board of selectmen to, to, to do, okay?
And, and one other point, you have sixty five days to either make a decision or open a public hearing. So.
To reopen it?
No, to open, to open a public hearing. So if you received an application, went on the sightwalk at the next meeting, you could say this is a significant.
Okay, but you see what I'm saying is we're kind of in this conundrum because we're not, we don't have professional staff that can go out and make that recommendation to us. So we're doing it on sightwalks now in, in another life. In another town, I couldn't have. Public attending a site meeting because the owner would never authorize it. And so as a result, we had to, we had to go out in small. Groups to view the site.
Which FEMA, by the way, really, really trounds over. Yeah, in fact, FOIA, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong, yeah, FOIA really is coming down hard.
Probably a violation of FOIA.
Okay.
Gina McCarthy was not a fan of the smoker.
So, yeah, the, the, I mean, yes, I know that's what was done in many places.
But then, then you have to do it with a consultant or, you know, expertise on the commission. I mean, I don't.
I don't, I don't really see it as a problem.
Going out to every site.
I mean, again, we can certainly.
Tell based upon the plans, whether something is gonna, could potentially create a significant activity.
And again, if, if during winter hours, you think that the sightwalks need to be moved to different times or places.
Saturday.
Then that's certainly, I mean, we, we ask every meeting, what are the good days for sightwalks? And if you want to propose a sightwalk on a Saturday, feel free to propose a sightwalk on a Saturday.
Well, that has, you know, impacts on staff and.
It has impacts on everybody, but I, we, when we went to the sightwalk three oh eight dash one, it was a Saturday at noon and I was there. Okay, it was good, that's fine, we posed it, it happened, it, it was not a problem.
If we think we're going to run out of time, I think we could schedule more than one, one date. We have a long list.
Yeah.
If it's, if we know we're going to run out of daylight.
There may be applications you don't need to do it.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah, because we certainly.
That one obviously is a lot different than a single house lot and.
But that's something the commission can, can, you know, make a determination. Respect.
Okay.
Uh, I, we have to go through the minutes to.
Oh, that's right.
All right, item number six, minutes of the regular meeting dated January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, any changes to those?
I do have copies of the minutes if anybody wants to go through them. Um, Paul, did you make copies for anybody? So it's for anybody who wants them. So here is January twenty eighth.
Did everyone have a chance to review them? They were.
And again, I have copies if anybody needs them, I have copies of the other ones as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Wait a second, why don't you?
All those in favor?
And this is at the, this is the last public hearing, right?
I'm sorry?
This is, you want to make a point of what are the last, okay?
Yeah.
This is not for the January twenty eighth, though. This is for the last public hearing at the, uh.
That you were taking notes that, it's the first one that Kim Grove is not here.
So that's, that's going to be when we get to it, the.
January twenty eighth.
January twenty eighth.
Which is what, the minutes? Yeah, that's what we're at now.
So why don't you, if you want to jump in here.
I do.
Okay, go, go right ahead.
Yeah, sure. So in the minutes, um. Whoever was recording them, put me down because I spoke that I was in opposition to the applicant. In what I said, and that was not true. What I asked was, who removed the beavers? You may, you might remember that.
They do remember.
And the council said the name of the, he said he could not divulge. Who the contractor was, and, and I said, I didn't hear that. You said to me, you want me to repeat that? You did it twice. But it, I, I said nothing about the applicant. It was in the removal of the beaver, so I was misquoted on this. On this, I just want the record set straight.
Sure.
Okay.
So, um, I'll make a motion to change that portion of the minutes to reflect that you were inquiring as to who removes beavers.
Yes, I was just questioning, I just wanted to know how they were removed, who they, who removed them. That was my only question. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, so many, all those in favor, I, any opposed? One abstention. All right, okay, and then, um, for the next two, I was not present, so I'll do them one by one in case some people weren't able to go. Minutes in sightwalk meeting dated February first, twenty twenty five, any changes to those? Seeing none, um, is there a motion?
For the future, and this isn't a criticism of, of these minutes, but when we have. A significant number of the public there, some count, we don't need their names, but at least.
I did actually take their names and count them up, there are twenty. I can put in the minutes how many people there were.
That, that's, I think that would be helpful when we're looking at, at the minutes.
So I, I have literally in, in this large stack of paper here, one of the pieces of paper is the list of people who were in attendance by name, so it's twenty people. Okay, just eat, I will make sure I add to the minutes going forward.
Yeah, I don't need it, but just some idea of like, most of the time we have nobody in the audience other than the applicant.
I understand. In this particular case, again, there were twenty people on the sightwalk, and I will make sure to add that for future sightwalks if there are people from, from the public attend.
And I like the time where you adjourned.
This is important. I think it's in there.
I thought I was in this.
It is.
It is. I, I've been trying, Mike, well, I've been trying as best I can to keep current law.
Right, let's move on and vote. Okay, all those in favor?
All right, we have a motion?
Approve, sure.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion. For seconds.
And I'm gonna abstain, so I'll do some favor.
All right.
All right.
Two abstentions.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and then the minutes of sightwalking meeting dated February sixth, twenty twenty five, any changes? Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
I know.
Any abstentions?
I wasn't thinking.
Okay, three, three abstentions. Okay. Motion to adjourn. You're not allowed to vote. I'm making you all adjourn.